Essentially redo zoning. And then the second item is to discuss whether or not and if we're going to send something to the hearing committee, which is I think the planning and something committee of the legislature, which is meeting Monday, which is the reason we're having this, having this special meeting today. We had, I had put together a draft of our position and is here, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have no internet access at the moment, so I just, I just have you on my phone.
You look great. Okay, so you should replace an alternate Diane, since you're leaving early, we have Ann replace you. So the purpose here is to, is to understand the, this proposed statute, discuss how it impacts Simsbury, and also we have a document, two things, one is the, is the three-page or so discussion of what our affordable housing picture is with respect to integration and affordable access. And then there's a draft of a cover letter or an email that I would, that I would think we should send to the committee on planning and development at the legislature, together with our draft of our position. So does, did anybody want to go through the statute? Have you read it?
Yes, I would like to go through it.
I think it's helpful.
Okay, Mike? There you are.
Yep.
Would, would you be willing to lead us through the statute?
Sure, let me just pull that up right now.
About 20, 30 pages.
Just bear with me, I'll, I'll pull up the proposal and kind of just give the highlights. So just to start off with some of the changes, obviously in the beginning will be definitions in state, in, in section eight dash one A of the general state statutes. One thing that's, that's a change that, you know, may trigger some comments is as of right, as of right, is, is kind of, they're kind of explaining what it means to have an as-of-right permit process. The others is, is concentrated development, cottage cluster, live work, live work units, Main Street corridor, and just a more defining of mixed use and townhouse developments. So that's, I'm just definitions, I don't really, does anyone have any questions on those definitions before we really get into the meat of the, the proposal? The next is just going through eight dash two and some of the reorganization eight dash two. Eight dash two, it's, it's, it's your, it's your enabling act, it's, it's what provides the authority for zoning regulations. Eight dash three is what gives us the authority to have a zoning commission. Some of the, a lot of the changes were intended to create a more, for a favorable environment for affordable housing. But there's, there's two things that really stick out. One is the as-of-right for accessory dwelling units. So basically, with that definition of as-of-right, I'll just explain that right now, as-of-right will mean now, moving forward, an approved in accordance with the terms of zoning regulation or regulations, without requiring that a public hearing be held, various special permit, special exception be granted, or other, some other discretionary zoning action be taken other than determination that a site plan is in conformance with the applicable zoning regulations. So, you know, you kind of did that with your accessory dwelling unit regulations, if it's attached right now, but with some criteria on how, what it means to be attached. Now, the ADUs that would be as-of-right, um, kind of give a broader sense of, of ADUs and a kind of setup of, you know, it's basically ADUs would be as-of-right throughout the entire community. The other is, it really is promoting affordable housing around TODs, which wouldn't affect Simsbury. TODs, I, I think you saw, I should, should be uploaded to your packet, and I apologize, it was a large presentation that was shared with me from D-Segregate Connecticut yesterday. It's in your packet, it kind of outlines some of the highlights of the bill, not the whole bill. And it shows a map that shows where this multifamily as-of-right would be allowed, associated with commercial or transportation corridors, and it's really the TODs in the state. So.
Mike, didn't they specify business districts as well?
They did, but, but, I mean, there, it's really what they're, they're, they're hitting on, they're, they're focusing on is the TODs, the transport-oriented development districts, which we don't have. And let me see if they have a definition of business district for you, I'm sorry, because in the district, in the definitions, you don't have a definition of business district. What you have a definition is main, Main Street corridor, which is the portion of any public road, not less than a quarter mile, not more than a quarters, three quarters of a mile in length, satisfies the following classified as other principal arterial, mi- minor arterial or federal highway, by the Federal Highway Administration, encompasses the intersection of two state routes, a state route that a federal, and a federal route has at least 50% of the frontage of such portion being used for office, retail service, mixed-use developments or general commercial purposes, and served by public transportation. So that's where, you know, really, you may see that map that I said that's attached to you, where I think that there, that the intention is that it's, it's landing on the TODs. But I mean, you still, it's worth making your comments on, on whether you're concerned that this could land in your community. Um, I know, Dave, do you want to jump to anything particular?
Um, restriction of parking.
Yeah, so, um, using estimates of vehicles miles traveled and vehicles trips generated in lieu of service calculation. So right now, you know, obviously you do your service calculations where, based on the use, parking now will be actually how, how many trips are generated by that, not so much making sure that you have a reservoir available for the particular user or use at the property. So that's, that's, that's a substantial change to how we handle parking right now.
It, it seemed to me it was aimed at reducing the available parking requirement and prohibiting us from requiring as much parking as we do now.
It will, yeah, yeah, those parking requirements will be reduced because now you're looking at how many people are coming and going versus just a straight ratio that we're using right now through, through current zoning regs in the enabling statute.
Well, the other thing is, the provision that somebody who is aggrieved can go to the state and essentially get an injunction?
Yeah, uh, let me, let me scroll down to that section. Yeah, so an aggrieved party alleging that the zoning regulations of, of a, of a community are not compliant with the provisions of subsection B or, or D of this section, or section five or six of the act may file an application to Superior Court for judicial district in which such municipality is located and join the enforcement of such regulations. If the court finds that such municipality failed to comply with the provisions of either the said section or other said sections, such court may issue an injunction for the purposes. So, I mean, that's, that, the teeth to say, if someone feels that you didn't update, that your regs are not following what, what, what the proposal is, then, you know, they could say that, that those sections of the regs are null and void through actions of the court.
But that's not that different than today.
Yeah, you could get challenged in court right now by, you know, I, I'll give you an example, a previous community I, I worked for, in Waterford, we were challenged based on a use, and, and the courts overturned our, our, the appellate court overturned our decision and said that, no, your regs are, they're not current, and the, the use was defined, so yes, you're right, you could get challenged with that.
Yeah, we've been sued before and overridden.
Yeah, but this is, this is more than just a suit, it's not, I thought the normal process is you would go to the courts, the judge would rule on it, but this seems like it's jumping ahead of that process and, and giving them the right to get an injunction right away.
But usually you have to go to court with a particular case or conscious, or, or controversy, you have to actually be aggrieved by the regulation. In this case, I think what they're saying is that the regulation itself can be challenged without an actual person who's aggrieved, which frankly, I don't think is constitutional, but that's another issue entirely.
Anyway.
Melissa's correct.
It's, it, that scared me, I don't, you know, injunctions make me nervous. Anything, any other parts of it that?
So you have issue, there, now you'll have commissioner training that's required?
Oh, right.
Six hours per, per year, I believe it was six hours, along with, your zoning enforcement officer has to be a certified zoning enforcement officer with the Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers. Already, that's a job requirement, that one I don't really see being an issue, but just to make sure that the commission is aware that you'll, you'll have, you'll have to take some time to do continuing education.
Yeah, that would, statewide, that would be a lot of, a lot of training. It was interesting that they require, you mean, they require the FOI training every year, an hour's worth. I mean, the law doesn't change that often to require it every single year. So I'm, I'm not opposed to, you know, training requirements, it just seems a little bit excessive for, to repeat the same stuff every year.
Although I will say, I took the municipal training that was offered by the CVA last weekend, and it was, it was like this nine-hour dump of, of zoning information, and, you know, I practiced development law in New York State, and it was still a lot for me to, to digest in one sitting, so, you know, two-hour, little two-hour courses, throughout the year might be more beneficial.
Probably done, you know, six hours altogether, you know, it's, it's basically this, the training that you went through, just requiring it every year, but we actually do a little bit more, yeah. But, you know, you'd really need FOI every year.
So should we have discussion, I don't want to, should we have discussion around the particular provisions and?
Yeah, does anybody have any comments about?
I, I have some, I have some questions about ADUs that maybe, I don't know, Mike, if you can shed some light on, section five of the proposed bill, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what, what Simsbury's zoning regulations are versus what is, is proposed here, and how, and particularly around, where is it? I think it's section, or, section five, two, allow accessory apartments to be attached or located within the proposed or existing principal dwelling, or detached from the proposed or existing principal dwelling. Can you just sort of go through those, those points or those numbers and compare and contrast?
So, yeah, hold on, let me just scroll back up to that.
It is page 13.
Right, because there's a lot of fives and.
Yes, sorry.
13, line, line 373.
Yes, thank you.
What sticks out to me, Shannon, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need an interior door connecting the units, has to be attached, needs to be a relative of some sort, correct?
Right.
And it requires a special exception or special, so it has, has to have a public hearing? No, no public hearing?
No.
So if it's attached, if, if it's an accessory dwelling unit that's attached to the primary structure, then it is a, a site plan approval with the commission.
Okay.
If it's a detached, if you want to put it in the, above the garage in your backyard or build another structure, that triggers a special permit.
Okay, and, and the proposed legislation will make all of that as-of-right, is that correct?
Yep, but then also.
Does it remove the, does it remove the relative requirement as well? Or it doesn't contain, I should say?
We don't have a relative requirement.
We don't have a relative requirement.
Good to know.
One thing, one thing we do have, which then, it's, it does say, is separate, where is it here? The utilities, if it's attached right now under your regs, utility is supposed to be shared. It says here, separate billing utilities.
Yeah.
So that's something that would be a change to what we're doing right now, along with another thing, well, too, is the connection between the, the ADU and the primary structure, the primary residence, we require it, if we're going to be, it's prohibited to, to require that in, in this proposal. When I say it's, it's prohibited or whatever, let's just keep in mind it's proposal, I'm sorry.
It would inhibit it.
Yep.
And they're bigger, okay?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, they're a thousand square feet in the, in the bill, and we're 600 square feet.
Right, okay, all right, yeah.
And the commission may remember, we were at a thousand, we went back to 600, based on the comments that we heard from the public.
Really? That's interesting.
Did it answer your question, Shannon?
Yes, and those, those are the things that stood out to me as well, I, I guess my only, my only sort of question mark there is around the utilities. But yes, thank you.
Well, the bigger one is the next unit, the, what do they call it? Where it has to, the one that you can rent that has the 30% income requirement and a 10-year.
Affordable accessory apartment.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm trying to find it here.
Line 14.
Like, like.
Where it's defined.
Oh, no, but where is it in the reg?
Oh, and I'm trying to find it now, too.
That may be in some of the changes proposed to 830J, because it would be a unit that's, that's going to count towards your affordable, hold on.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering what that would do for, you know, we, the issue with that whole reg, I mean, that's part of the reg, the issue we have with the current reg is that, you know, it requires the, well, I don't know what you call it, the, you know, you have to file that it's, that it's going to be affordable for 10 years, and we're seeing that as a problem for developers now, is they can't get mortgages, and, and what do you do when your house has one of those requirements on it? Would that be a problem for personal sales?
Any, any mortgage banker will look at that, say, that's a constraint.
Yeah, you know, so I, I think, I mean, that's the only, that struck us, me, is, you know, the state getting us more in trouble with that requirement.
Is that in this bill, or is that in another bill?
It's, it's in here somewhere.
So one point is that if this is the way it is throughout the state, then I don't think mortgage bankers will be pushing back on it anymore, because otherwise they can't do it at all in Connecticut, right?
Right.
So by making it statewide, that actually makes it a little more financially feasible.
It's statewide now, but it is still a problem.
It's still a problem, you know, your bankers are, they're very nervous.
Okay. So was there any, I guess, you know, what are people's thoughts about this?
I think that's a problem, I'd like.
What are the problematic parts of this? Because I think everybody expects that this is a concept bill, and people are going to put in comment, and we're hopefully going to get a much better bill coming out of any process that has public comment. So what, what specifically around accessory dwelling units, the language that is in this proposed bill, would people like to make changes to, to make a better bill?
Personally, I like the language that is proposed in this bill around accessory dwelling. And I, again, my only question around it was, or my only skepticism, I guess, was around utilities, and how that really, I, I don't know what the, what the end game is there, I don't, I'm trying to think of the scenario, but, yeah, I think, I support this, this piece for accessory dwelling, I think we absolutely need to encourage detached units and to promote independence, and I, what was the other thing? Oh, and increase our square footage.
Okay, we have had, Shannon, we have had public hearings on accessory units where we, we got hammered for the thousand square feet, and we, we moved it back in our last go-round on accessory apartments in our zoning rewrite to 600 feet, where it had been, it had been for years, and then we increased it to a thousand about 10 years ago, I think. And my opinion is a thousand was okay, but we have to respect the fact that there were quite a few people that, that showed up at a public hearing to object to that.
When was this, Dave?
Was when Schoenhardt was trying to put in his accessible unit on library lane, no, not library lane.
Past your lane.
Past your lane.
Remember, you, you had that application three times.
And we lost, it went to, it went to Superior Court, and, and we lost, and so he's, he's got permission to, to put it in, but.
And, and what was the, I'm sorry that I wasn't here at the time, but what, what was the objection to a thousand square feet?
The primary objection was that Schoenhardt said that he was going to rent the unit, which would be on the second floor of his house, and that income was necessary for him to stay in Simsbury, and that, that triggered a, a firestorm of neighbors who didn't want anybody renting accessory apartments in the neighborhood.
The objection residents have is they don't want, you know, they've bought a single-family house, and they don't want the neighborhood to be two-family houses all over, which is what, is what this reg would allow.
Right.
And, you know, the neighbors are saying that's not what we bought into.
Well.
They don't really mind so much if it's a family member, or, you know, someone close to the family, but just having another dwelling unit, you know, a two-family house next door does impact property values.
And safety, remember, we had an, an issue with, in the south end of town, an accessory apartment that, I don't know, had sort of grown kids in it with, with dogs that were not friendly, and it was a real, real problem there.
But that's a, that's a different, I mean, that can be regulated in different ways.
Not really.
Like if there's dogs.
Not really.
You know, you, you, they, they were concerned that you now have more cars in a park, in a driveway, which, you know, a Realtor will tell you that detracts from the property values. So there were a bunch of issues when you have two-family houses everywhere, and so, I mean, it's one thing to say that you have, you want multi-family units in certain places, but not every single parcel, single-family house should be able to be converted to a two, two-family.
And do we feel differently about attached units within the main, within the main dwelling versus an as-of-right secondary unit on the same parcel? I think that answers yes, yeah? But I think that, you know, I also.
Single-family house.
Right, you shouldn't have two single-family houses on the same parcel.
Right.
So, but I also understand Shannon's goal here of permitting independence, accommodating disabilities, so it seems to me that there's some way to do both of those things, right?
Yes, and I don't think that, you know, to say that everyone is going to be building these, you know, accessory dwellings, and the town is going to be overrun with ADUs is sort of, is probably not going to happen. I, I just believe that allowing or permitting this option is more equitable.
Well, well, we, we have, I think what you're looking for, we already have. You're really asking for the accessory apartment.
I'm, I'm a proponent of the, yes, the accessory apartment, but I, also a detached unit.
Yeah, and we allow that.
We allow that.
But.
You need a public hearing for it.
Well, that's what I'm, exactly, that's.
Well, you, you, you know, when we don't protect people's properties, letting them weigh in on what somebody's doing next door, we'll, we'll get voted out of office, is the real factor.
Well.
People, you know, the residents of the town have an investment in their, their lifetime investment, for the most part, is in the house that they're living in.
Well, who do we consider?
You know, if you threaten that without giving them a voice, I, I don't think that's fair either.
Well, who are we considering residents of the town? There are many residents of the town who are, you know, not, I, I just think we need to expand what that, that definition is. I mean, are we being as inclusive as we can be? I don't know.
Well, it's usually the neighborhood.
Oh, sorry. Can I just jump in for one second, because I have to drop off? Am I allowed to comment, even though I'm not actually doing any voting?
Sure.
Because I'm in a discussion, absolutely.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I've really, all I'm going to say is, because again, I, I hear everybody's points, um, Dave, I read your document, I support what you're saying, I feel that what we're doing currently in town, I'm not a huge fan of things I feel are kind of rushed through and, and kind of forced on us at the last minute, I think that we, as a town, have been making a lot of accommodations, trying to address these issues already. I'm not saying that there's not some value in any of this, but I'm not a huge fan of just these kind of last-minute, I know people have been working on it on a while, but, but we're kind of hitting it at the last minute, so, not a fan, I support the document that you wrote, Dave, and that's all I'm saying, so, thanks, everybody, I got to drop off.
Okay. Work is a problem for.
At noon on a, on a weekday, really?
Meeting that was called yesterday?
That I didn't even see until this morning.
So, could you resend, send your, your document to me somehow Comcast does something where multiple people use the same email title, it stacks it, and then I lose the attachments?
Mike sent it a couple of times right before the meeting, too, if you look at Mike Liddon's stuff.
Yeah.
I apologize, my, some of your emails were bouncing back with the attachments, so if you got multiple emails from me, I'm, I'm sorry, something, something was going on in email. Kevin, you want me to resend it to you right now?
Yeah, but use a different title.
Okay, oh, well, I'm going to send it a separate email just to you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And it's, and all of these documents are also uploaded to your packet, so they're on, they're on the drop box.
I saw that you did that, and then it disappears. So I'm not sure.
I didn't see it in the drop box, is it?
The, the, I don't remember seeing a cover letter, but the, the letter is definitely there.
So Dave, can I suggest, I mean, yes, I can suggest anything, but why don't we put a pin in the accessory dwelling thing, and so it can be considered at the end of the conversation with all of the other things, you know, once we decide how it all works together? By the way, I noticed that there's a trap rock, an anti-blasting for trap rock ridges provision here, which has nothing to do with affordable housing, but. which has nothing to do with affordable housing, but.
Great, I think a comment should be made about that.
I think so too. Especially in light of the development that's going on at the south end there.
Exactly. Where, what page is that on?
I don't know, I missed it. Maybe it's one of the first things I noticed when I read it.
Yeah, it was somebody from Canton got into this.
There's also something about light on. Where is it? Advertising signs are not equipped with the ability to calibrate brightness. Three fifty lines, line three fifty one.
So so that's an existing statute, the billboards, that was um two years ago that 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 was added to the statute. It was enabling certain towns to basically regulate the brightness of billboards along I ninety one and ninety five that go through their community.
Okay, yeah, because it is not underlined, so it's not changed, I guess.
Yeah, the only thing I think, do they have in there a deletion of the word advertising for signs?
Yes.
Well, it's in brackets.
So so that's to be removed and that's to solve, that's to solve one of the the problems that we that Bob D discussed with you regarding that Connecticut case.
Content neutral.
Yep.
Okay, other comments?
Trying to find the trap rock ridge section in here.
Three forty, it's just.
Three forty?
We're just talking about, yeah.
Thank you.
There it is.
Oh, there it is. Ta-da.
All right, so that's.
Oh, so that's not new. That's not new then.
No. But it's very specific that there's a definition in the existing statute eight dash one AA on what trap rock ridge is.
Wait, it seems to me like maybe that's deleting it because look, there's a bracket at the bottom. It looks like they're deleting paragraph B and C.
Deleting something.
There, yes, it's a, and they're, those are added later to kind of reworded.
Okay, so that's where I need to go find and look at it, it's in the new section.
Two thirty six.
Two thirty six? Ah, here we go.
Three, line three thirty two to line three fifty are deleted.
Zoning regulations may, starting at C, May, yada, yada.
B and C are, B and C of that are deleted.
Yeah, but it's replaced by two thirty six.
Yeah, sorry, I was I was leading us through what we have now to, I should have clarified what I was doing there. I brought us to the old stuff and then brought us to the new stuff.
Wait a minute, so three oh.
So three, two thirty six is what the.
That's the new, the adjustment change proposed.
Trying to compare the the deeds. Not conforming, timbering and emergency work versus. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I understand it now and I I'm good with it. I don't care. Not that I don't care, it's just that I understand it doesn't.
And it's, it really isn't changing, right?
It's not.
Not.
It just says the municipalities can continue to regulate, it doesn't say you have to.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay.
Just to note, it's it's specific to the trap, to the features defined in the definitions of eight one AA.
Right.
Which is very, very specific geographic locations.
Okay. If we're done chewing on this, I'd like to look at the proposed letter that I drafted and edit that so everybody's happy, if we're happy with.
Well, should we discuss the other things around the as of right stuff? I don't think we really discussed it yet.
I thought we did, go ahead. What do you, what do you got?
No, I I just didn't think we specifically discussed it, that's all.
Am I, I'm missing something? What what do you want? What are you saying?
I just thought we should get like input from all the commissioners about what their opinions are about this to begin with before we start drafting or or adopting specific language around it. But we, never mind.
About the proposed bill as a whole, is that what you're saying, Melissa, or what?
No, there, I mean, there are specific provisions within, it's just, you know, drafting wise, it's how my mind works, that's all.
Okay. My concern with this is it's a rewrite, it's taking away our local control and we should object to it. And if people agree with that, then we can proceed. If you don't agree with that, then we'll we'll have to drop the idea. But so I guess the question is, how do you, what do you feel about entering an objection to this bill? To start with, and then we can go through and if we agree that we should, then we can go through the list of things that we want to include. And I had included a list of six things, but we can, we can edit those and change them. So.
I I mean, I, as I've stated before, I, you know, my I would, I support this this piece on accessory dwelling, and I know that that is one specific unit, but it's very important, and I do not object to its proposal.
You support the bill as it is?
Not not, I'm not saying the bill as a whole, I'm saying that this particular language around it, so if you're asking me if I, you know, would support an objection overall, you know, based on the whole bill, no, because I think there are pieces of this this legislation that are valid. So I I don't object to it as a whole. I mean, I don't, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Technically, we're objecting to it in its current state, right? We're not saying no, 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 we are saying we don't like how this is working.
And here are the things we don't like.
Right.
Can we offer amendments?
No, let's let's save the areas that we object to and let them fix it. I think if we want to make amendments, we're we're gonna supply them with language, that's that's a more difficult task.
Well, I think the thing is that Simsbury has done a lot of this so well already. You know, we were first in state on form-based code, we've got apartments north and south, we have we have a lot of multifamily housing here already. I think something like twenty one percent, I think that lost the twenty sixteen. I don't remember the data since then, but I think twenty sixteen, we had twenty one percent of our population in Simsbury was food insecure. So we know that we have an economically diverse, economically diverse population. And we've done this so well already that that I think that we get our hackles up a little bit because we did it well and we did it with local, local control. And and the worry, the worrisome part is that when you take local control away on zoning, you're not just taking it away on zoning, you're taking it away on economic development as well. And our ability to to guide our community's future. And I think that's probably the overarching concern that, I don't want to put words in everybody's mouths, but I think that's where my overarching concern comes in.
Okay. How about you, Anne?
Um, I believe very strongly in the in these towns' ability to control the zoning. I thought this was, this bill as proposed was a little overreaching. And at the same time, I like what you wrote, Dave, and I I would support that as well.
Kevin?
I haven't seen yet what you wrote. Looking at too many different documents.
Moving on from Kevin.
Yeah, move on, move on.
I I also have not had the time to get through your entire document, but I quickly briefed it as I did with all of this stuff because this all happened yesterday, which, you know, I unfortunately do a lot of different things and didn't have a lot of time to dedicate to this specifically, but on the basis of what I saw, I support the letter as I agree with Anne's an overreaching by the state. And Melissa, you know, what you said and how you said it is is very well summarized.
Could just add to that for a second, I I see what you're I agree that Simsbury has done wonderful things with with zoning, but I think that there is a very there, it is a very realistic point that our town is is mostly white and mostly affluent. So why, why is that? And what what can we do? Not that there's any, that is not a wrong thing. My question goes back to, are we being as inclusive in our zoning as we can be? And do we go back to, again, I'm harping on the ADUs, but do we go back and have another public hearing and really see what the the interest is now and adjust our our code because I think this issue is evolving and people's minds are changing?
Well, I I think that there's there's a lot of things we've done that have that have permitted accessory housing. It was in the plan of conservation, conservation and development from two thousand and three and maybe before. We adopted regulations, we had look, input from our community and we've come down to the position we're in now, which is, we're kind of trying to limit them to family members or people that are part of the family with our regulation that you have to have an interior door and you have to have common utilities. I think that's what people wanted and I and I think that if the bill opposes that, our community doesn't, doesn't like that. The other thing about people of color, black people, we have, we have other ethnic groups, Asians and Hispanics, to a larger degree than we have black. I don't think that housing values and affordable housing is a factor in whether or not black people want to live here. We have two black families that I know of, learned about in the last month or two. One of whom was featured in the Connecticut Mirror story about her difficulty in getting section eight housing anywhere. And she ended up getting a rental house on Bushy Hill down near forty four within a, with a section eight voucher. And she's got a single family house and I guess several kids, and I'm I'm sure she's pretty happy in a single family house. There's the other one that was in the north end of town, it's a black woman who bought a house. And she's now a member of the police commission here in town. And, you know, those are two people that multifamily housing was not what they, what they wanted or got to. I think they're very happy with what they had for the yards for the kids to play in. And anyway, so I think we've done things that encourage people to come, we don't block anybody out. So I think it's a choice that that people make. Look at the case up in Smith College or wherever it was, where the the black woman raised tell about people asking her what she was doing in a, in a closed dorm or a closed place. But one of her, one of her demands was that they have racially segregated housing for the black students there. So is there a natural inclination for people to want to live near people like them and that maybe that's the problem? You know, I don't know, but we certainly aren't, we aren't pricing them out. We have lots of multifamily new stuff that's available. I I don't see that 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 that's an issue, Shannon, that that somehow rather we can fix with zoning. If if there's a way to fix it with zoning, then let's fix it, but I don't see that in this bill.
Actually, if you, is is your document, the affordable housing one where it says that there's thirty percent of the housing was under two fifty, is that what it, two fifty?
Yeah.
So that is actually less expensive than buying one of, than than renting one of the apartments in the new apartment houses.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
It would be, yeah, it'd be better off buying a house than trying to rent.
I think it was something like twenty six percent of the houses sold in twenty twenty in in Simsbury were under two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that falls within the affordable category, you know. But I don't want to gloss over, I don't want to gloss over Shannon's concern about the ADUs, but the problem with the overall conversation on that, I think, is that we don't have time to have a public hearing before we have to put in comment on this particular bill because it was it hit, it it went live, I think, on Tuesday or Wednesday, and they're having a public hearing on Monday. So we don't have time to have another public hearing in Simsbury about any of this. This is what we got right here.
And we're we're registering, we're registering an opinion that will get read there somewhere and then they'll do what they're gonna do. I mean, we're not, it's not like we're mandating something.
I I understand what what you're saying, Melissa, but I think we get, we've gotten into this pattern of saying, you know, we're not gonna do this. And and then there's no, you know, clarification down the road, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to put in affordable housing here. And then there's no further discussion about it. So I'm just, I'm I'm just saying that regardless of how we react to this bill, I along the lines of the discussion, I think at some point it will be imperative to have additional public input on our regulations.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I I think that, remember, this zoning commission is the one that rejected the open space or or elected not to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the Meadow Brook units be turned into open space. And one of our primary concerns with that, there are already eighty eight affordable housing units in that approved, that approved development. And so we have already stood up for affordable housing in Simsbury, even at the even at the price of open space, which everyone values. So we've already made that that pretty clear, I think.
And affordable housing, Shannon, you're new to this, but this discussion's been going on for twenty years or more. We we had Powder Forest, when that development went in, the zoning commission made them put affordable units in there. Unfortunately, they did it in a, in a way that didn't qualify for the state affordable housing units, but did qualify as as something that made it difficult to to finance. But anyway, so we we've been talking about this for a long time and trying very hard to have affordable units, and I think we have affordable units in town. Thirty three percent of our unit, of our housing stock is affordable and by the state numbers. Anyway, so I would, I would like to object, my feeling is I would like to object. Kevin, I didn't hear from what.
Well, I'm still not sure I have your letter.
Why don't we share screen then? Let's put it up on the screen. If someone lets me, I can share my screen or if somebody over there can do that.
Mike can, Mike can grab it in Dropbox.
Right. I guess there's some, I I I agree. Not that anybody's asking me, but I agree with the point that Simsbury has done this well and and we've proven that local control can work and and that's the point that I would like to drive home. I think there's some specific language I would probably want to wordsmith a little bit in Dave's bill, uh, letter, if this is what we're planning on sending in as our public testimony position.
All right, did I, did you get it? I shared it.
And Shannon, just a brief comment on 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 your, on your thoughts is, and please, fellow commission members, correct me if I'm. and please fellow commission members correct me if I'm wrong, and your resident at any point can bring language in front of us to discuss about our regulations. Right? So any, any town, town member can come before us with, with concerns about our regulations at any time.
Yes, of course they can.
And, and the reality is though, that we tend to act upon applications that are brought to us. So if we don't have an application that's talking about affordable housing, we, we tend to not create that issue, but you know, maybe we should take a more, an additional proactive step.
Different with you. We had a lot of discussion in our, in creating the zoning regulation that we
That's true.
Last two.
Right. I came in at the very tail end of that, so I, I'm probably speaking out of turn there.
And we had, you know, years ago, we identified the workforce, they were called workforce developments at that time. And we identified a number of properties in Simsbury that would qualify for that.
There was the incentive housing zone. Talking about incentive housing zone, 2012.
Again, more evidence that Simsbury does it right to begin with.
The, the issue we have here is that are the zoning regs aren't doing, you have to have a development come forward.
Right, right.
Because we, you know, there's, there are, I would be open to development in town if there, you know, along, you know, Route 10 somewhere that would be affordable housing if, but the developer can't afford to develop it.
So then we have the and we have the POCD that forces us, you know, or at least, you know, our planning and zoning group body to, you know, look at all of this on a, every seven years, every 10 year. Right? How often do we renew the POCD?
10 years, we just did it.
All right. So looking at the specifics of Dave's letter.
All right.
I would say that second sentence of the first paragraph, you're bolder than I am.
Well, I, you want to change the language or eliminate the sentence?
Um, I, I think it's, I mean, this bill unnecessarily restricts local control of zoning, especially in communities that are already achieving many of the objectives that this bill purports to seek to achieve, something like that. I probably couldn't say that again if I had to, but.
This bill does what?
I just said I couldn't say it again. This bill unnecessarily restricts local control of zoning. Tell me, okay, as what did I say? Especially in communities that are already achieving, largely achieving the objectives.
The point that I wanted to make is that the objective of desegregate Connecticut was to rewrite the zoning regs to eliminate segregation.
And you don't believe that this bill accomplishes that? That's exactly what we should say then. Right? Does anybody disagree with me on that?
No.
Okay.
I mean,
the laudable goal of desegregating Connecticut.
How's that?
Boom. First paragraph, second sentence, I would probably say something like housing costs and availability are not the primary drivers behind the lack of, of, of ethnic diversity.
Um, you guys also, like when we're talking about affordable housing and desegregation, we're not just talking about race. We're talking about affordable housing for differently able people, physical disabilities.
That, that's correct. And I think
You're right.
But this law, desegregate Connecticut, is aiming at race and particularly blacks. We have Asians, we have Hispanic to a greater degree than we have black in this community, but I don't care who's in this community. I think all ethnics are, are great, but I, I think their, their objective here was to get more blacks in Simsbury and
I think we, we should just refer to, you know, diversity instead of specifying any particular
Yeah, I would agree.
Identity, yeah.
I would say housing costs and availability are not the primary drivers behind the lack of, before, behind the limited economic, ethnic diversity in Simsbury.
Well, again, don't put the ethnic in there because that, because you're
Limited diversity?
Just diversity because that, that abilities, you know, whatever.
For the homogeneity of Simsbury.
Yeah, you got an extra that there.
Yep.
Get rid of that, that, or not the reason.
There you go.
Okay.
I'm glad By committee is not easy.
Well, I'm glad I took typing my senior year in high school instead of great ideas.
As did I. I'm glad to see it was not just girls who were taking typing their senior year.
I was earlier though.
Okay.
No comment to two.
Mike, you, you said that this mandate doesn't really apply to us, but it seemed to me it was arguable.
So, yeah, that, that you're talking about, you're on number four. Which one are you on right now?
Having, having 50% of the area near your commercial district be designated for multifamily units.
Yeah, that, that really applies to the transit oriented community. So for example, Windsor Locks, Windsor, West Hartford, Hartford, Newington, the bus line or the, or in this case, it's actually the train.
Fast track.
Britain, Berlin, Meriden, Wallingford. There's an example of a quarter that this would apply.
We should take out three. We should eliminate three.
So actually I'm going to push back on a little bit, Mike, just because I, when I looked at that, I said, okay, so what's the definition of transit, right? Because there is, you know, a commuter lot right down the foot of my hill here. And, and as it's currently drafted, the current definition of transit doesn't open Simsbury up to applicability, but that, that definition of transit is so easily revised.
It's the intersection of two state routes, right?
But that's for the multifamily, not for the transit, right?
That was an alternative definition.
Is it?
Anyway, that, it's, I think
I think it doesn't hurt to leave it there.
Doesn't hurt to leave it there, I guess, is it? Okay.
Can I go back to number one for a minute?
Sure.
Because if we're saying housing costs and availability are not the reasons for lack of diversity in Simsbury, maybe this is a rhetorical question, but what is the reason for the lack of diversity? Do we have an answer to that?
I don't think zoning can answer that question.
Well, I don't think we should be claiming
Right. So maybe that the correct phrasing then is that zoning regulations are not the primary driver of the reasons for lack of diversity in Simsbury. Is that more accurate to your opinion, Shannon?
Yes, I mean,
obviously housing cost is a reason. You're right. You're right.
Well, they, they're
The availability of multifamily housing is not the primary driver is what you're saying.
No, both housing costs, our housing, we have 33% of our housing, single family units that are affordable. Right?
We do. It's true.
I, I don't, I don't think they are the reasons. Uh, I don't, I don't know what the reasons are, but it's not zoning.
Well, then we should say that it's not, it's not zoning. I mean, I, I think that, look, here's the, the over under on this. I, I'm not in support of this letter. I, I think, so I'm not going, you know, I don't have a lot of positive things to say about it. I think some of the language in here is offensive. And so I, I do not support it. So I, I really, I don't have anything positive to say, but I, I do think we at some point need to answer that question. Housing costs and availability are the reasons that there is not more diversity in Simsbury. Whether or not that has to do with zoning is a different discussion.
And that is an arguable point. And, and not everybody agrees with your comment.
I'm sure they don't.
Okay.
So Shannon, are there comments that you could offer to this letter, although you find it on the whole, something you wouldn't support?
Melissa, Melissa, let's continue through.
Okay.
She said she's not in favor of it, so that's okay. She's entitled to vote no. But editing it, um, let's get it, what everybody agrees to, except for perhaps.
Well, and to Shannon's point on the second sentence in, in one, right? I mean, Melissa, you proposed that we the language being that zoning, you know, our zoning, right? Which is what this whole conversation is about is not the reason for lack of diversity in Simsbury, right?
Right.
So
Yeah, yeah. I'd be in favor of changing that to zoning regs, yeah.
And I would be, I would be too. I think it's more accurate.
But Shannon, it is worth a discussion in other groups as to what is the reason.
I, I, yes.
You mean, I think we all need to be educated as to what it is. I I mean, I've listened to programs, you've listened to programs.
Yeah, this conversation isn't going away for sure, right?
No, it is not.
But exactly. I wholeheartedly agree with that, you know, but, you know, it's, it's not what our job today is, right? It's, we are formulating a response to
Right.
what has been proposed.
Yeah. And, and I'm sorry, Dave, but four years ago, 50 years ago, in the sixties, Simsbury was out promoting, you know, there's a headline for the newspaper about how Simsbury wants to increase its diversity. How the school board was trying to hire more black teachers. And then 50 years later, we're still facing the same issue.
But it, but Kevin, it's changed an enormous amount. We have a black school member.
Yeah, no, you know, it's
And we have a black police commission member and we have, we have like 3% or 4% black people and like 12% of other ethnic groups, whereas in 1960, there was hardly any.
Yeah.
So
Concern came into play. I mean, we, we, we were trying to do things, so but we just need to figure out better how to encourage diversity in the town.
Yeah.
And, and in the vein of that, reiterate that diversity is not just race related. I mean, how many disabled people do you see living independently in Simsbury?
We have two multifamily units specifically for that.
How many did you say?
Two multifamily units.
Developments, you mean, not units, right, David?
Developments, yeah. Sorry. One, one in the south end, one in the north end. So
Developments, right?
Developments, buildings.
Yeah, which is hundreds of units.
And we also have the Simsbury House.
Simsbury Housing Authority? Is that what you said?
Simsbury Housing Authority, yeah.
Well, okay.
Shannon, that may be one of the ways to explore because I, I think anything that's going to be affordable is going to need some government assistance.
For sure.
And the way to do that would be through the Simsbury Housing Authority. You know, they would have to get some funding in order to either buy the land or whatever that would be, make property development affordable. We haven't, we haven't developed any, any of that in decades.
Can we move on to four?
Yeah, yes. I'm, I'm going to have to jump off here in a couple of minutes. So if we could get through the letter, that would be fantastic.
Okay. Parking requirements, I, I think restricting our ability to mandate parking, I don't know. I don't, I don't like that, but what do you guys think?
I don't know that it's a punishment, but I don't think we need it.
Well, let's change punishment.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you value roominess is not the right thing. If we don't do it for roominess, you're, you're doing it for to make sure that people aren't parking on the street. For, you know, it's, it's a safety thing.
It values open space and public safety. All right.
Is Glidden still on?
Where'd he go? Yep, he's down there.
And do you have a, any recommendation for here as to why our parking requirements are the way they are?
The, the ratios, the ratios, well, I mean, we, we developed those ra- ratios, obviously, uh, based on, um, the uses, and it's really to provide minimum requirements for onsite. So it's kind of like following your police power. It's, you really think zoning, you have, it's a police power. So you're protecting public safety, health, welfare, et cetera. So that's why you're looking for having, what you said earlier, get people off the streets into a safe facility to support the, whatever user. This proposal would probably, it will result in a reduction of what those num, what those ratios look like. Cause you're less looking at just a, an arbitrary number based on square footage and you're looking at the actual amount of users that are, that are, uh, frequenting one of the facilities or, you know, or from a, like, let's say it was a multifamily housing development, how many people really will actually, you know, uh, based on number of bedrooms, et cetera, be driving to the facility, having guests come there on the number of average daily trips.
Yeah. So, so Dave, I mean, the saying open space is kind of contradictory to say that you don't want, you, you don't want less parking because you value open space. Well, if you, you would want less parking if you valued open space.
All right. So what do we want to say?
Well, I think it's safety and, I mean, you know, you know, you want sufficient parking for the, for the residents.
We want to make sure that our plows can plow the streets when they need to. We want to make sure that people don't have to park in the street in order to have, you know, um, social engagements at their house. And the way that they have rephrased it, I think it's, I don't know how you do that. It's such an unwieldy, how many trips per like, like, how do you actually put that into practice? I don't know. I think that the way we have it is a, is a close approx, as close an approximation to our goals of safe streets as we can get to.
So Melissa, this would follow the state of California, actually, and they're enabling that in their zoning regs. This is how they determine parking requirements. So an engineer would come in with a traffic study to say, this is this use, this is how many on average daily trips that this use generates. Therefore, that's my minimum, my parking requirements based on, you know,
So who's paying for that traffic study?
It would be the applicant.
But if you're not an applicant, if you're an existing town, how do you determine that then? Who's going to pay to study the entire town of Simsbury? We are, right?
No, no, no. So that would be your, 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 um, it would be, you know, developed really application based. If we were to add it in our regs, we'd probably look at some, some white papers to, or other examples from other parts of the country, such as some of the California community, communities that regulate based on daily trips. We'll at least have like industry benchmark start with.
We, you know, any big development now does a traffic study.
Okay. I see what you mean. It's not like it's going to make everything else legally non-conforming because we'd just be overly conforming.
Correct.
Anyway, I just think it's either the mandate, we just object to the mandate, that's all.
And potentially, you know, after the study is done, we, the, some of the projects that are out there may not have the right amount of parking, potentially, maybe, maybe no.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm really going to have to jump off here. Are we going to have a vote on this? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm really going to have to jump off here. Is, are we going to have a vote on this? Or?
I'd like to, yes.
Okay, um, I really do have to go. Can I just say that my vote would be in support of the letter and in whatever revisions that this committee makes in the course of this discussion?
Okay, that's fine.
Would that work? Would that be legal?
Well, yes, we're not, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your trust in us, Ann.
Yep.
You're welcome, anytime.
Thank you, Ann.
Five. Five doesn't really say what we've got. We, we only require a public hearing for a detached accessory. Right? But it would take, it would take away our public hearing safeguard, that's my point.
I would say that was take away the public hearing safeguard for detached units. So I guess with respect to five, what I would comment is that, based on, you know, a two-hour meeting on a Friday, you know, right before a public hearing at the legislature, I don't think that's the time to revisit. Simsbury's already carefully, considered position on this, but I think it's something that bears, that bears us revisiting as a town, along the lines of, of Shannon's concerns. Um, but for this letter, this is an accurate statement of, of where we are.
Okay. The attached document has the summaries. Has everybody read that? There are big problems in that.
Mike, is this in the thing that you sent earlier?
Are you?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, let me take a peek at that.
Oh, never mind, I'm just getting ahead.
Definitely page five. Underneath the some Connecticut legislative proposals, the first paragraph after your three, uh, sections, your three, uh, bullet points. Respect to number one, eliminating neighborhood character as a criterion for zoning application decision does not address the issue of segregation.
Where, where do you have that, Mike?
Uh, page five.
Oh, okay, page five.
First sentence after your three bullet points in the some CT legislative proposals. You know, most of this above that is, is just statement of, you know, not, I don't want to call it fact, but statement of information.
Yeah.
That's where we start getting into opinion, and I would like to try and keep opinion out of this document if we can.
I agree with Mike. I think we should eliminate that section entirely.
What legislative, will this whole thing?
No, from segregation and housing cost, that entire section, I think we should eliminate that.
Down to.
So I think we should eliminate the entire section called segregate. I'm sorry, Mike, I had jumped into a section that was different than the one you were talking about. I apologize. I'm going to be quiet now.
No, it's all right, you're.
Yeah, I would go along with getting rid of that paragraph.
All of this?
Just that, you know, the three lines, the paragraph, segregation of housing costs. And the three.
This one?
I don't know where you are.
Segregation and housing costs.
Right, and the paragraph below that.
You might need to get that up on the screen, Dave, if you were.
Yeah, we can't see what you got.
Oh, it's not on the screen?
No, we still got your letter.
Your, yeah, the cover letter is what's up.
I thought it replaced it. Hold on, let me find where I am here.
That new solid state drive is just too fast for you.
Well, I'm out of control here.
And you're doing an all about it.
Oh, I know, I'm the, um, all right, I'm going to stop sharing. And then I'm going to share. And I'm going to pick that one.
You say so? Right.
You get it?
Got it.
Okay, so you wanted, this is an opinion?
Yeah. And.
Go ahead.
Mike, that's the section you were talking about, right?
Exactly. So with respect to number one, eliminating neighborhood character.
I would delete everything after character, down to make the it, the I and it little. I would delete everything from as down to segregation.
Nope, not that far.
Yep, too far.
Too far.
Too far. Hit your back button over here.
Wait a minute. With respect to number one, it does, however, diminish protections available to property owners from obnoxious neighborhood.
So actually, go to greatly, and so with respect to number one, it greatly diminishes, I think is what it should be, right?
Yep. There are the dozen, however.
Okay, how's that?
Yeah. Oh, we need an ES at the end of diminish now. Diminishes. Is there something in this letter that talks about Simsbury being the first in the state in form-based zoning, form-based?
No.
Form, is it true? It's true, isn't it?
Might, no, I don't think so. Might have been.
No, I think Hamden actually beat you.
We're close.
We're second.
Okay.
Early adopter.
I was going to use the exact same words, Kevin.
All right. This, how about the third proposal comment?
Right, as applied to Simsbury. A third, right.
That's a reverse, okay, you took that out, thank you.
It was a red flag.
Reverse gentrification?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, happy with that?
I think you should, I think you should point out that in that last paragraph about the third proposal is that as applies to Simsbury. It's not that it would do that in every community, but as applied to Simsbury, yes, it would. Virtually everything between Hot Meadow and Bushy Hill would become as of right multifamily. And I think that's an unintended consequence. I think that, you know, one of the things people don't understand about Simsbury, and maybe you don't even know it if you live here unless you've been out door-knocking everywhere, is that we have a ton of multifamily developments here. You don't necessarily see them all the time, um, but they're there. We've got a lot of multifamily housing, and people don't associate that with Simsbury.
Well, except all the people that complain about all the apartments that are being.
Okay, those you can see, but they're the other ones that are actually of more affordable. The new multifamily housing we have is not affordable, as they say. Not at all, but we do have, you know, a significant number of multifamily developments that have affordable housing in them. Perhaps not de-restricted affordable housing, but de facto affordable housing.
And actually, you know, some of this, the new development is making the old developments affordable because.
Yeah, we have Section Eight housing in Tariffill.
Yeah.
And that brick complex of, I don't know, many apartments.
Little arms, yep.
So a lot of them. Okay, are we gaining on it?
Could you do like a, a word search for like racial, or because we again wanted to focus this, focus this as an inclusive to not just racial or ethnic diversity, right?
Over on the right, right side, find.
A little bit farther, there you go.
I think it's also control F probably, right?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. I think we took them all out of the comments alone, I mean.
Oh, except in that very fir- oh, we have, okay.
Pardon?
That's okay, in my opinion, um. Do we need that first sentence in the intro? We know that that's the case, and that's a good thing.
I, I wouldn't like to remove that, um, there is a current movement to take actions aimed to eliminate racial segregation, because I think it's just a movement.
Sorry, what?
Just remove the word current.
Well, I, I mean, I'm struggling with a, a chunk of this introduction, because I think we've covered that in our cover letter.
So maybe the intro would start with, you know, um, this document is intended to illuminate, uh, the affordable housing situation in Simsbury.
Eliminate the affordable housing situation?
Illuminate, not eliminate.
Sorry.
Or educate, or. Felicitate.
How's that? Now it's all just about the accessible, or about Simsbury's situation, which is what we've started out to do. Okay.
Mike, have you taken a peek through it? You know what, I think, I don't know where we put this, or if we put this anywhere, but, you know, I think the proponents of this are saying that, well, zoning is a creature of state law, and what the state giveth, the state can take away. Okay, but it's been a state law for over a hundred years. And communities and people have developed things around that to the point where it, it may be a state law, but this is a, once in a multi-generation, bill that, that would entirely revamp the way we do land use regulation in, in Connecticut. And I think it's certainly more deserving of more than five days for communities to digest and understand and react to. And that's, that's probably my greatest objection.
Melissa, it's go- it's going to get that, okay? We're, we're going to be one of thirty towns that say, we don't really like this. And that's all we're really doing. And this legislature will go off, and maybe somebody will pick up something of what we said. But I don't have a great deal of faith that we're going to.
Well, we also need to work with Hampton on this, too.
Yeah, well, I would send it to the Legislative Committee that's doing the public hearing. And I would send it to, uh, Hampton and Kevin, uh.
Yeah, Kevin.
But goes. Okay, do we agree with that? It's now one thirty.
I, it's worth every minute that we can put at it, right?
Yep.
And I do think, as I've, as I've said before, I think we have some responsibility beyond this discussion that we're having in regard to this bill, to do some work to address some very real community concerns. I'm not the only one who, who feels that way, although it appears that way right now. Um, there, that, I'll just leave it at that.
I don't think anybody would not agree that we need to do more work.
I definitely am any and all conversations, for sure, and the opportunities to illuminate, as Melissa so eloquently put.
Okay, are we ready?
I'm nothing if not eloquent.
Okay, everybody who's in favor of sending this, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Shannon, you're not, so it's four to one, plus one absentee.
Right, Ann voted in abstention early.
Okay, we'll count it, five to one. Okay? Thank you, guys. That's all.
Thanks for doing that draft.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Dave, yeah, thank you for, I don't know how you got this together so quickly, but it is appreciated that you put all this time in.
Would have had more time for my computer and, uh, anyway, thank you all for participating.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for your work on this, and thank you, everybody else. I really like how we worked together on this.
Kevin?
Yes.
Should we move to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second.